Evening. The December 8, 2016 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Lamar Jones, pastor of Galilee Baptist Church. He is also employed by Longview LSD and is the president-elect of the Longview NAACP. Welcome.
Let us bow. Probably God, we thank you now for this day. We thank you for all that you've done. We ask now, God, that you would allow your presence to be felt, that you would give wisdom and knowledge to this council. We pray for the city of Longview, that you will continue to bless and keep us. This is our prayer we ask in Jesus' name. We say, "Thank God," and amen.
Amen.
Let us do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Jones, thank you very much. Always a pleasure to have you in council chambers. Tonight, during employee recognition, we're going to recognize the CVB and the Main Street. The Longview Convention and Visitors Bureau represents the community to visitors and works to generate economic benefit through tourism. This is accomplished through marketing, visitor services, conference services, event assistance, and collaboration with other organizations. The Visit Longview Texas website and social media pages provide information about events and entertainments happening in and around the Longview area. The CVB partners with the Parks and Recreation Department to promote Longview as a sports tourism destination. They also partner regionally with groups such as the Northeast Texas Tourism Council to draw visitors to East Texas. The CVB also works in collaboration with the nonprofit organization 100 Acres of Heritage to implement Longview's Main Street program. They promote downtown as a destination for museums, restaurants, shops, and events such as downtown live concerts, movies on the Plaza, and the Longview Christmas Parade. The Convention and Visitors Bureau include Kerry Fisher, Melinda Hine, Elaine Reynolds, Shawn Harrow, with lots of assistance from Media Development Team, especially Crystal Gable.
This is a very special group of people to me because we brought them over from the chamber last year, and they have more than exceeded our expectations. You all have been so wonderful promoting the things that make Longview so enjoyable to the people that live here, but also people that want to come and visit our community. So, I know I thank you all, but I know the citizens thank you. If you all haven't participated in the downtown live, the movies on the Plaza, the Christmas Parade, things like that, all of that comes from this group of people, and they put their heart and soul into it, and they're there. They don't just get it ready. They're there at every event. They take the time to be there. They're present. And you know, when you're present, that's ownership. When you take ownership, it shows in what you do. So, I thank you, and the citizens of Longview thank you. Y'all are the greatest ever. Thank you so much for all that you do for the city of Longview.
Thank you.
That's a great team right there, ladies and gentlemen. Even Shawn. I'm surprised you didn't have a little something written in that I didn't know about to promote him for some way or another tonight. It's good. We head now to citizen comment. I have a few speaker cards. Deidra Beckworth.
I'm glad to represent the Longview, this town, in action, word, and deed. I was wanting to make progress this year. I went to school as a nurse assistant, and I was distracted from a lot of things. And my long-term goal was to be in a provider of home health, in home health. And I did get a job in home health for six months. And I had a vehicle at the time. And then I went back, I went back to Kilgore College, and I got a teacher's aid degree, a certificate. And I didn't really know what I wanted to accomplish at that time because there were so many distractions and things in the way and stuff like that. But I dealt with them, and you know, I still want to pursue my goal. I still wanted to go after what I wanted to do. And you know, even though things seemed right, it was okay. But I was hoping that I'd find someone to speak for me. You know, even though things were getting bad to worse, I was hoping I'd find somebody to speak for me and be there for me because I know I couldn't do it on my own. And since I've been here, I've been on SSI, and you know, they always thought I was mental, crazy, but I was that bad off. I wasn't that bad off. I'd worked my way up to where I wanted to be and do, which I thought was with myself, my own effort, was my own effort, but I still needed help, you know, along the way to get where I needed to be. And you know, like Kasha Williams, I wish I got to know her a little bit more and stuff. And Ms., Nona, I wish I got to know you a little bit. But it doesn't have to stop here. I was wanting to make that progress and do that, and it doesn't have to stop. And they have a class on stronger relationships on, at Longview Community, and I was wanting to attend the class on stronger relationships, but I never did. But I'm never gonna, but I was, I said to myself, "I'm not going to give up on trying to get to know, get involved, you know, in the community." But, anyway, I'm gonna take my time, whatever I do and stuff. And whatever setback comes my way, I'm going to handle it the way I can.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. My next speaker is Karen Holt.
I usually never write anything down, but when I get to talk about affordable housing, sometimes I get carried away, so I'm going to stay on task because I know I don't want the buzzer to beep on me. So, good evening, council, as well as the audience tonight. My name is Karen Holt. I serve as Housing Navigator to Community Health Corps, which is your local mental health authority, and the Aging and Disability Resource Center. I also serve on the City of Longview's Housing Advisory Board, as well as on the Board of Directors for the Northeast Texas Homeless Consortium. I speak tonight to you to show support and ask for your support for the agenda item for the Tax Credit Development Edgewood Place. I would like to share with you a few startling facts as to why Longview is in great need of affordable housing, and I think y'all also have a folder y'all can look at later. In Longview Gregg County, we have less than 40 affordable housing units per 100 families for individuals that are low or extremely low income. To be more exact, we only can provide affordable housing for about 30% of those families that are low or extremely low. Our rental housing wage is slightly over $14 an hour, which means that any given household would have to make about $14 to $15 an hour and work 74 hours a week in order to afford a fair market rent housing rate in Longview. This is very alarming and leaves many families paying well over the standard of 30% that should be paid toward monthly rent based on their salary. Hundreds of names are on the waitlist for all city housing voucher programs, as well as all affordable housing properties, while some of our conventional fair market rent properties or your high-end properties have many vacancies. We are in desperate need of affordable and accessible housing of all forms in our community. At the Aging and Disability Resource Center, our number-one call on a daily basis is for rental assistance for persons with disabilities and aging adults, and they cannot afford the housing rates that they are currently paying due to their low fixed income. They either are in a home that is extremely too costly for their small budget, or it's not accessible to accommodate their disability. This project, Edgewood Place, would bring roughly 80 to 100 units of safe, decent, and affordable homes for individuals that earn between 30 and 60% of median household incomes for our area. Just on a side note, median household income roughly for Longview is $56,400 a year. So, those individuals that earn half or less than half of median income would qualify for these homes. Those are a lot of our police, fire, fire people, they do that, and a lot of teachers. This project would build, be built with high-quality standards, and also has a highly-trained staff that cares about the community and their residents. With all the statistics I've mentioned above, as well as the printed materials that you have, I urge you to support the tax credit development to assist the many Longview residents that would benefit from this property. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Heather Roach.
Hello. My name is Heather Roach. I'm the owner of the Yellow Checker Cab here in Longview, and I'm here today to talk to you about Uber and other ride-sharing organizations. Too many times we see small business owners fall by the wayside, and then large businesses come into the picture. I'm sure you've heard this story before about large companies coming in and offer services that are so much cheaper, and the small companies have to raise their rates just to pay the bills. Ride-sharing programs have fluctuating rates depending on the day of the week or the holiday. The Yellow Checker Cab has maintained the same slow rates that it has, low rates that it's always had, even when it was all the way back to London's. A large number of our customers are elderly or low-income people who do not have debit or credit cards, and that's the only way that rideshare is accept payment. Yellow Checker cares about the people of Longview. We have lots of accounts with hospitals, nursing homes, and we deliver prescription medications to nursing homes all over East Texas. We are more than just a cab company. We are here to provide a service. At this time, we are working with Robertson Roberts, offering free rides from local bars and clubs from now till New Year's, and we are proud to assist LPD whenever they call. And we usually give those people a free ride home so that they don't end up in jail. It is my understanding that ride-sharing companies do not require background checks or commercial insurance. And I see things on the news on a daily basis about bad things happening to people who make the choice to use Uber instead of a taxi. When you get into an unmarked car with someone that you don't know, you're opening yourself up to risk. Many drivers undergo, my drivers undergo a thorough background check by LPD to check their criminal history, and then another background check whenever I add them to the insurance. All these checks are done annually. Cab drivers have to meet a certain criteria. They have to be trustworthy and honest. They have to be alert and able to deal with a wide variety of situations. For example, I think like with Uber, or any other ride-sharing organization, they're probably not used to dealing with people who've had too much to drink. And when people sometimes become belligerent or rude, they would probably be put out on the side of the street. Yellow Checker does not do that. My drivers know that it is our responsibility to make sure that those people get home safe to their families, whether they are drunk or mean or acting appropriately. Sometimes they get paid, and sometimes they don't. Our main objective is to get them home safe and sound, and that's what we care about. Insurance for taxis is very expensive. Accidents happen, and it's a must. And if something unfortunate happens and someone is in the car, then those people need to be taken care of. Regular insurance is not good enough, it's my understanding that that is what rideshares Uber and other ride-sharing companies are worldwide. Yellow Checker is just here. There is not a huge demand here for this industry, but if Uber is loud here, I don't see how I'll be able to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no more speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak and fill out a card afterwards? Very good. Thank you. We're now to presentation. This is fixing to get really fun. First, we're going to have a presentation of a check from the Longview Lions Club, the City of Longview, for wheelchair-accessible swings. Les Rickett will present the check, but we also have Scott Baggett, Don Francis, Wayne Mosley, Gordon Feener, Leroy Richardson, and Richard Parker.
We're going to gang up on you.
Come on up.
Okay, come on.
Everybody comes up.
Sounds good to me.
You got something to read, Mr. Les? You get the mic for a minute.
I get the mic for three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Attention.
There's no beeper now. If you got that in your hand, there's no beeper.
Okay. Can I hit Don with this thing?
Please do.
Mayor Matt, City Manager Willard, and City Council, people in presence. 2017 will be the 100th anniversary of Lions International. We, as a club, in January decided that we wanted to do a legacy program. We wanted to do something that would benefit kids that are handicapped and wheelchairs, would have more access in public parks. We looked around, we found no wheelchair-accessible swings in the Longview Park system. We met with Scott from Parks and Recreation. We formulated a plan to raise money to build one at McWhorter Park. We've probably seen them around the community. We put out jars for million pennies, asking people to donate, and the people in Longview and the area were very generous. By September, we'd reached our goal. We're here today to present a check for $7,000 for the, for McWhorter Park for wheelchair-accessible swing. Kind of FYI, 2017 is the 100th anniversary of Lions International. 2018 will be the 90th anniversary of the Longview Lions Club. So, we may be back again, Andy.
I have a few things to say. Let me get some paperwork here. I have a lot of information, and I'm going to summarize real quick. The Lions Club started on July 4 of 1921 here in Longview. What the Lions Clubs do in Longview, they help, A, the visually impaired, they help with youth opportunities, Boy Scouts, community and global support, Lions Club International, Centennial Legacy Projects, vision screening for children, eye exams in glasses, the Texas Lions Camp, scholarships, nurses' recognition awards and luncheons, health fairs. Are you kind of getting this? These people do a lot. And you know what? What really makes me so happy is that they do it for our community. And this started with the Lions Club in January, and it was brought to my attention by some other individuals as well, along with the Lions Club, that we don't have wheelchair swings in Longview, and that's a sad state when we can't do that, we can't provide for our kids. So, we took this upon us as a city, a city of Longview, and in really no time at all, we raised the $50,000 necessary to put one wheelchair-accessible swing in every park, in one park in every district in Longview. So, thanks to the Lions Club for starting this ball rolling. You guys did it, and you came through with your donation, and you know, it's wonderful when you, when you have a plan, and that plan actually works. And you guys never don't work. Y'all are amazing. So, it's great to be a part in it with you all. I thank you for the participation and for leading this effort because from this point forward, our kids in Longview, the handicapped children, will be able to swing in a swing just like a normal kid does. And you know what? There should be no more greater joy than that. If you gave, if you participated, pat yourself on the back because this is a, this is truly, this is truly from the heart, and this is what our community is all about, and this is what makes Longview such a great place to live. So, thank you all so much for what you've done. Thank you, sir. Stop screaming. Get a picture. Come on in, guys. Thank you all. Thank you, guys. Do I get to keep this?
I think I can.
This'll work. We'll make it work. There are a lot of people. Even better. There are a lot of people sitting in this audience that donated to this project, and I just want to say thank you to everyone out there. I know a lot of you up here did the same thing, and so, this is, this is part of our Go-Giver spirit, ladies and gentlemen, and I just can't, it just does my heart good. I have a couple more presentations to make. Chief Sloriano, Sheriff, come up, please. Chief Bishop, come up. Our Sheriff Maxie Sloriano and Chief Bishop. Jim, this is on the agenda. You just don't see, you didn't get the copy of this one, okay? It's okay. Don't worry. A while back, we had another wonderful donor in Longview donate body cameras to our city for the police officers in the sheriff's department. And he's already given his portion to the police. He gave $35,000 to help you all get your body cameras. And the sheriff contacted me last week and said their body cameras were here, and they needed to get theirs done. And so, Tom Chin and his wife Jill, who graciously agreed to do this, wanted to be here tonight, but they had another engagement, but he sent me with this check for the Gregg County Sheriff's Department for $10,170 to get y'all's body cameras for the sheriffs and the officers. Thank you, sir. So, that makes a total of about $45,000 that the Chin family has donated for our law enforcement. And once again, it just helps people see that we step up and we take care of things in Longview, and I'm so pleased, and I know you guys are pleased. This is what's good for our community. So, thank you for participating. Thank you all for going with this body camera, because I know that was, there was times we weren't sure what we were going to do, but I know it's going to be the right move, and I thank you all for your wisdom in this, and I thank the Chins for their generosity. So, City of Longview, we have a lot, we have a lot to be thankful for, don't we? Thank you, guys. Thank you. Also, this week, we will hopefully have a formal presentation of this soon, but my daughter Spencer contacted a classmate of hers from Longview for the Miracle League. Miracle League is the handicap park that's going to be at Lear Park, and they're trying to finish their funds to complete that park, so they'll be playing on it in the spring. So, she contacted Chris Davis. You know who Chris Davis is? Wonderful guy, wonderful young man. Chris Davis donated $50,000 to the Miracle League this week to help finish their park. So, this is the spirit of Longview right now. We're a giving, giving, giving community, and that's what makes us the best place to live anywhere. So, I want to thank Chris, I want to thank the Chins, I want to thank the Lions Club, everyone that took out their dollar, whether it was a dollar or $100,000, doesn't matter. The fact is, you gave, and when you give, it's a contagious effort, and it shows, and I appreciate that. I know the citizens of Longview appreciate it, but these kids will benefit, and when the kids benefit, guess what? We all benefit, and this is what, this is what our city is all about. So, thank you all. Thank you for your donations, your generosity. My next thing, would someone please get Mr. Dale Wilson to come in the chambers, please? I don't know how many of y'all know Dale. You all should. Dale started working for the City of Longview in July of 1987. Come in, Mr. Dale. 29 and a half years this gentleman's worked for our great city as the facilities services senior maintenance technician, and he's retiring. And he deserves every bit of that retirement. But this is one fine man that has served our city with such a wonderful heart, such a generous kind. I remember Mr. Dale when I was a council member 10 years ago for nine years, and every time you walk in here, you see this smile. This is, this is what the City of Longview is all about. These employees that give their heart and soul to us as citizens, and Dale is the epitome of service to this community. 29 and a half years, Dale. We're going to miss you. We appreciate you, and we love you, man. Told you it was going to be fun. Okay, we're up to public safety updates. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Willard, thanks for allowing me to provide you a short update since our, since our last meeting. As you can see, November was another busy month for us. We answered just a little over 9,700 calls for service. Again, arrested, roughly had around 189 arrests, 28 of which were felony for 33 charges, and 172 arrests, for a total of 299 misdemeanor charges that were filed. We had a milestone in our department. We had two of our officers that reached 25 years of service, and I'd like to recognize them tonight and thank them. On the left is Lieutenant Rob Bowen, who's the watch commander over our day shift patrol, and Officer Johnny Lyons, who's assigned to evening shift. Both of those reached 25 years of service and wanted to thank them and recognize them tonight for their number of years of service to the city. Also, this last week, we had a commissioning ceremony for Matthew Prescott. He's our newest officer. He'll be going through a few weeks of commission, in-house training, pre-commissioning training, and then we'll proceed on out into field training. So, with our staffing full, we're still continuing to get the officers trained and get them out as fully functioning officers. I'd like to give a shout-out to the Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 4125 here in Longview. Over the last several months, they've had a series of fundraisers and raised a total of $3,000 for our K-9 unit. They come down and presented us with a check, and that money will be deposited into the account for the K-9 dogs and officers to help with training and equipment as well. We just talked a little bit about the body cameras. Our body camera program is moving forward. We have all the equipment in. We're going through the installation. Some of the officers are actually wearing the cameras now. We have some, a few little technical issues to address, and we're continuing with the training, and hopefully here real soon, we'll be at 100% full implementation of the program. So, that program is, is moving forward as expected. It's not too late for Blue Santa. We'll be accepting donations until December 15. Donations can be dropped off at the Police Department. For more information, they can contact Officer Misty Ryan at 331-2541. This past summer, you may have heard me talk a lot about our Citizens Police Academy that we did at night. This past summer, the Police Department has been engaged with different organizations that are working with and mentoring our youth in the city. So, we've, we've developed after the first of the year in January. We're going to implement a Citizens Police Academy for the youth of our city. It'll be for teens aged 14 through 18. That will begin January 23, and will run through March 6. What we're going to do in this Teen Police Academy is, some of it will be classroom and explanation about officers' procedures that we use, but then we'll turn around and we'll do some scenario-based training with the students and allow them to participate in, in the training exercises with us. So, we think this will be a very good program as a way to reach out to our youth and help, help bridge that gap and answer any questions, or help them understand better how police operate when, when they're in the, in the field. So, we're looking forward to this. The class will be limited to 30 students. Officer Roger Askew will be the point of contact, and Sergeant Mark Alford. Beginning tomorrow, we'll have this information up on our website, along with an application, and we'll start accepting applications for that. So, we're looking, looking forward to this Teen Police Academy after the first of the year. And the holiday season is upon us. We won't meet again until after the first of the year. Just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We're gonna implement a Citizens Police Academy for the youth of our city. Uh, it'll be for teens aged fourteen through eighteen. Uh, that will begin January twenty-third, and will run, uh, through March sixth. What we're gonna do in this Team Police Academy is, some of it will be classroom and explanation about officers', uh, procedures that we use, uh, but then we'll turn around and we'll do some scenario-based, uh, training with the students and allow them to participate in, um, in the training exercises with us. So, we think this will be a very good program as a way to reach out to our youth and help, uh, help bridge that gap and answer any questions, or help them understand, uh, better how police operate when, uh, when they're in the, in the field. So, we're looking forward to this. The class will be limited to thirty students. We're Officer Roger Askew will be the point of contact, and Sergeant Mark Alford. Uh, beginning tomorrow, we'll have this information up on our website, along with an application, and we'll start accepting applications for that. So, we're looking, uh, looking forward to this, uh, Team Police Academy after the first of the year. And, uh, the holiday season is upon us. Uh, we won't meet again until after the first of the year. Just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, and know that, uh, we will have extra, extra, uh, units on the street, uh, during the holiday, holiday weekends. And, uh, want to encourage everybody to have, uh, safe and happy holiday. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things that have gone on in the Fire Department since we last met. Uh, first and at the top of the order is, I've been working over the past several Saturdays, we've been doing this really since October, with a group of high school students that are members of the National Honor Society at Longview High School. Uh, they won't, they came, approached me about a service project, and, uh, said, asked if I had any ideas, and I said, "Yeah, I've got about four thousand ideas." They all need a fresh coat of paint on them, and I tell you, they jumped to it, uh, for these consecu-, or not consecutive Saturdays, but every other Saturday, these students have been giving up part of their day, part of their downtime from school on Saturday morning to go out and paint hydrants. And we've started really in three different areas concentrated around Longview High School, uh, and they have done an outstanding job. And as early as we're getting up there and getting started on these Saturdays, I've not heard one disparaging word, no bad attitudes, everybody's ready to get there and get going and get done. Uh, and I've just been really impressed with this group of young adults in our community. And actually, I have a few of them in the audience tonight, they're sponsored, Cara Letso, Cara Letso is here, and some of the students, I might have to ask them to stand up real quick, just so that they can be recognized. These other young ladies here, they're all officers for National Honor Society, so they're kind of the point people, the contact people, they're the ones that have been organizing this and getting the other members of that group to come out on these Saturdays, so they've done a fabulous job. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
They're helping make our city look better, they're helping us deliver our services faster, and it's been, it's been fun to educate them on why something as simple as this is so important to us. We've had a great time. Still got more to do, and they're, they're encouraged, they want to do more, they're, they're like, ready to take on some in the spring, so, we've got a great partnership working here. Uh, as far as keeping our city pretty, we had the opportunity to participate with Green and Clean a few weeks ago. Uh, our adopted park here in the city is McGreal Park, where the bus transfer station is, uh, so our Fire Administration also kicks in to do what we can to help keep our city clean and pretty. Had the opportunity earlier today to speak to the Leadership Longview Group, that, that class, they met up at the Emergency Operations Center up on Whaley Street, and, uh, had the opportunity to share with them what that's all about and why that's important for the city, and kind of educate them on some of the behind-the-scenes activities that go on, the things that they don't see that are all in support of what they may see happening out in the street, and why that's important, and maintaining the relationship, the great relationship that we have with Gregg County and the state of Texas as stakeholders as well. Great group, as they ask some fabulous questions. This one, it pains me a little bit to deliver to you, you realize that there's a little bit of friendly rivalry between fire and police. Uh, the most recent undertaking was we participated against one another in the Doors Bowl-a-thon a few weeks back. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to report to you, the Police Department took that trophy away from us. Uh, I do have to say, we had them, we had them at two games, but then, uh, we got a little big-headed and challenged them to a third game, and they spanked us. So, lesson learned, we won't make that mistake again, we'll cut it off at two games next time. So, we had a great time, great camaraderie, it's great to get out and fellowship for such a good cause. Uh, we're entering into probably what's going to be the coldest night thus far for the winter, uh, and this is just the beginning. So, this is typically for the Fire Department, from November to probably late February, sometimes even into March, this is when we see an increase in residential structure fires. And a lot of it is attributed to what people are trying to do to stay warm. So, outside of cooking fires, which is always kind of the number-one cause of structure fires, in the wintertime, in the holiday season, we see a lot, a, a lot of fires that are caused by heating appliances. I realize everybody's gonna do what they have to do to stay warm, we just want to encourage them to be smart and safe about how they do that. Keep those space heaters far away from any combustibles, furniture, at least three feet, give them a wide berth to do what they need to do. Uh, electrical appliances, overloading your electrical circuit, plugging in too many things to one outlet. Uh, these, these heating appliances, they have a large amperage draw on your home's electrical system. And if you plug in two or three things to an outlet that was really only designed to do one, it's going to start a fire, and we're going to see that. So, we want to encourage people to be smart about how they use these electrical appliances in their homes. And with the holidays, we see a rise in fires that are started by candles. Uh, everybody has candles, celebrating whatever, burning all throughout the house. Again, be cautious, be mindful, don't leave, don't leave these candles unattended and give them their space. To update you on Fire Station Five, work is still ongoing, uh, the interior and exterior modifications are still underway, we're still making progress. I do want to correct something that I delivered to you at the last meeting. Uh, I had estimated that we may be back in the station by the end of this month, December. That is likely not going to happen, just because of delays that we've encountered. It, I, I do feel pretty confident that we'll be in by the end of January, so y'all can hold me to that one, and we'll keep pressing forward to get that crew, get all of those crews back in that station. And this is the last time you're gonna hear me talk about this, our EMS subscription service is still open for enrollment. Uh, this will be, uh, ending December thirty-first at midnight, so if you're interested in saving yourself some money, should you have an unforeseen ambulance trip, this is the way that you would want to go about doing that. So, we highly encourage our citizens to take advantage of this program and help themselves out in the long run. And I have one other thing, I do not have a slide for, just to remind everyone that our annual Fire Department Toy Drive is taking place this Saturday at the mall parking lot. It will be running from nine to five, there will be crews up there to accept your donation of toys, uh, and we really put these back out into the community and give them to kids to have a, a happy Merry Christmas where they may not otherwise. So, we really want to encourage our citizens to pitch in and help out. We live in such a great community, we're always taken aback at how willing people are to come give for such a good cause. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief Stillman, thank you for engaging the youth of our community. Uh, you and Chief Bishop are doing a fantastic job of keeping people informed, educated, uh, and safe. And we also appreciate the camaraderie between the two departments, because I'll say it a million times, we have the best police and fire departments anywhere in the world. So, thank you, guys, for what you do for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, the consent agenda, any items council like, pulled off for separate consideration?
I'd like to remove item A, please, Mayor.
So noted. Anything else? Is there a motion on consent agenda?
May I approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Moore, would you like to discuss item A?
Item A has to do with, uh, mobile food units, uh, the task force met last month, um, to consider opening it up to have commissaries, uh, outside the city limits. The, uh, task force voted to, uh, basically correct an unintended consequence of our, uh, mobile food unit ordinance, uh, to allow, uh, to continue to allow frozen food deliveries and, uh, prepackaged, uh, sandwich items in industrial areas. Uh, they voted, uh, not to allow, uh, unrestricted mobile food units in, to operate in the city with a commissary outside, uh, the city limits. I respect their decision. Uh, do I agree with it? No. Um, we, uh, would like to, to be known as a community that's open to new businesses, uh, new entrepreneurship. Uh, I have every confidence that, uh, our Health Department could have adequately, uh, protected our, our public health lives, uh, but they saw fit, uh, not to do that. So, I just wanted to open that up and, and let you all know my thoughts on that subject.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any more discussion? Is there a motion on this item?
May I approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Aye.
So noted, motion carries. Zoning. We are to PD one-six dash one-four, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Willard. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone from single-family to planned development to allow for the construction of a prayer garden and a columbarium. In addition to the columbarium and prayer garden, a water feature with a six-foot, uh, brick fence with iron details and an open-air pavilion will be constructed. Uh, the site will utilize an existing parking lot, which is owned and maintained by Saint Matthew's Church. Um, this prayer and columbarium is in conjunction with Saint Matthew's Church, that is located directly across the street from Arrow Lane. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, along with, uh, staff recommend approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers? Discussion from council? Public hearing is now closed.
May I approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. With the action items, Consider Resolution, Resolution evidencing support for an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, twenty-seventeen, competitive nine percent housing tax credit for Edgewood Place Development to be built in Longview. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Willard. Uh, this is a resolution, uh, that, that would give support for the Edgewood Place. Uh, as you may be aware, the, uh, nine percent tax credit apartment process is very competitive, and part of that competitive process is if the city support the project, they get additional points. Um, as you may remember, a number of months ago, they had proposed a, a location in Longview that was very controversial. Uh, they took a step back and looked at other locations, uh, the location that they're looking at now, uh, we feel is more appropriate from a zoning standpoint and a locational standpoint, and, uh, the applicant, uh, Megan Lash is here also, uh, to talk a little bit about their project, but this would be a resolution supporting that application, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, after, after Megan. And I'd like to introduce Megan Lash.
Good evening, Council and Mayor, my name is Megan Lash, I represent Sagebrook Development. We are also the owner of Amberwood Place Apartments, that was built here in Longview in two thousand and twelve, um, so they're the same organization. Um, we have been in the business for over fifteen years, we have developed more than twelve-hundred units in Texas, several of which that are in this, um, part of Texas. We have, um, had typically fifteen years' ownership, so we've never developed a property under this financing tool that we've sold. So, we are long-term owners, and that's why it's important for us to continue, uh, keeping a nice property and continuing to grow our portfolio in each community that we build in. We can build anything from a townhome to a high-rise community, and we're Texas-owned, so our ownership is based out of, uh, Fort Worth and myself in Austin. One of the things that sets us apart, if you've driven by Amberwood Place, is our art in public places. We commission a local artist or a Texas artist to create a piece for each one of our communities. Um, since we've built here last, um, we now pursue NGBS certifications for each one of our communities to help lower the overall energy, uh, footprint for our properties and lower the bills for our residents. The property that was first shown on the first slide actually is receiving a, uh, energy conservation and, on the national level this year at the National Home Builders, Builders Association and multifamily, so we're pretty excited about that. Our management practices, we have an onsite manager and onsite maintenance man at each community. Um, again, long-term ownership, and we're Texas-owned. Each property has resident programs, career, career counseling, we do, uh, things, uh, like Boys and Girls Club, uh, tutoring programs on, on our property there, Amberwood Place. This is a list of all of the properties we've built in Texas. As a company, we've built over sixty-eight communities, but this is just our Texas properties. The other two, uh, besides Amberwood that are in this area are Pinnacle, North Chase, that was built seven years ago, and Sage Meadows and Tyler, that's actually the one that's receiving the National Merit Award. Our site is located just off of Clinic Drive, it's just over seven acres, it is, uh, close to the Social Security Administration. We really like this site and are, are excited to have found it, um, it, from access perspective and the proximity to services, it's, it's a really great, um, location. It is also zoned commercial, so it will not need a rezone, multifamily is allowed, and there's a commercial designation. There's another shot. This will be a mixed-income community, as, uh, Mr. Shirley had mentioned, it will be between ninety and one-hundred units. Uh, ten percent of the units will be unrestricted market rate. The mix of one, two, and three bedrooms will be a three-story residential buildings with an onsite clubhouse and a mini center, and then again, the National Green certified. Just a little background to the housing tax credit program, I know several of you are familiar with it. Um, this, this program was actually created under the Reagan administration and has been one of the most successful programs to create public-private, public-private partnerships, and we've created over two-point-four million homes since nineteen eighty-six. So, it really incentivized, uh, banks and investors to invest in the local economy and in return, um, able to write that amount off their, off their tax bill. The apartment rents are, are structured, um, based on the family's income of the, the area median income, fifty-six thousand four hundred, and at the bottom, there's a breakdown of the area median income that will be within the community. So, it'll range between thirty percent AMI to sixty percent AMI, and then we'll have market rate. And then AMI is area median income. So, what really is workforce housing? It's a privately-owned real estate investment. We have a high level of oversight, not only from Texas Department of Housing, but from our investor that is actually purchasing the tax credits. To be successful, we need to be well-designed, well-maintained, safe and secure for our residents. Um, there's definitely a market demand here, uh, that we have seen since we have built our Amberwood Place property. We've stayed a hundred percent lease, have very little turnover, and so, we've been anxious to build something else in the community, because that property has, um, definitely shown there's a, a major need in the City of Longview. And it's a program that is designed for seniors, for working-class families, people that are on a fixed income and that need a quality, safe home for them to live or to raise their family. What it's not, it is not public housing owned by the housing authority, it's not Section Eight housing, it's not a halfway house, it's not owned by the government, it's not owned by a nonprofit, it's not short-term temporary housing, and it has less than a one percent, uh, nationwide foreclosure rate. And a lot of that has to do with the high level of oversight that we have to, um, adhere to. So, who are some of the residents? ISD support staff, classroom aides, uh, first-year emergency service providers, really just people that are starting out in life and need a quality place to live. These are all examples of, uh, properties that we've built, the ones on the few slides before, the properties here in Texas, that's, uh, Sage Meadows and Tyler, that's receiving the National Award this year. Amberwood Place, of course, in Longview. This is our veterans community that we built in Selma, it actually, um, we donated a portion of it for the wounded veterans that are coming back. We built a classroom space for them as well, for the Wounded Warrior Project to come in and train three days a week, so it's been a pretty neat, neat deal at that community. Into a little bit of, our style can range from high-rises to mid-rises. The amenities onsite will have a business center, children's playground, twenty-four-hour fitness center, multipurpose room with kitchen, uh, swimming pool, splash pad, typically we'll do an outdoor fireplace or some sort of outdoor entertainment, barbecue grills, and, um, hoping to do a fitness trail of some sort of, some sort of out, outdoor fitness equipment. These are just other pictures of, they say pictures are worth a thousand words, so trying to give you an example of the quality of what we build. And this is the top left, or sorry, the top right is the meeting space that we built for the Wounded Warriors in Selma. Entertainment space down the bottom right. Pictures of our units, because we are long-term owners, the quality of not only the exterior of the, of the development, but the interior is also very important to us. Items such as tile, granite countertops, uh, flooring materials that last longer, that you don't have to change over every time a unit, uh, switches tenants, those are longer lifecycle items, and they are high-cost of development. So, if we put in items that are, uh, like I mentioned, tile and solid surface countertops, they ultimately make the unit nicer, it turns into a more luxurious unit, but it makes the property nicer for a longer period of time. So, these are items that we spend money on, on the front end to ensure that the property stays nicer for, for the lifecycle of the development. And these are just other pictures, this is actually the Pinnacle, North Chase and Tyler. Few pictures of our art in public places, you guys might remember the Longview Art Project, the mural that we did a couple of years ago with the Longview artists that all participated. And this is the last slide, it has a list of a few of our other projects that are currently under construction. And I'm available for questions, I went through that really fast, I'm sorry, but, um, didn't want to take up too much time, but, here for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, council?
I just want to make a comment. Megan has been very flexible, uh, this proposed spot is in my district, as well as the prior proposed spot, um, and I really appreciate your willingness to work with us. I think, um, we're all on the same page, this is really needed in our community, um, the numbers Karen gave, uh, we need to help address that. So, I appreciate you being willing to develop here and working on bringing this to Longview, and also being flexible with what worked for us as a community, um, on where to place it. So, I really appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you very much. You have the questions, council?
May I approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next action item is, uh, Consider Ordnance, meaning chapter one-oh-three of the Longview City Code to repeal the city's current regulations governing public vehicle taxi service and enact new regulations governing transportation for hire. Mr. Bonds.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Willard. As the mayor described, this is an item that will repeal, amend, replace chapter one-oh-three of the Transportation for Hire Code, also known- of the Transportation for Hire Code, also known as our Taxi Code. So I'm not sure which button to use, but a little bit of a history, the original transportation code was written in 1943. It's only been amended a few times since then, so I think Mr. Willard drove that cab. We've recently been asked by a ride-sharing company to begin their operations here, and as many cities have discovered, we found out that our ordinance did not allow that business model. So I have to make some changes. Most of the changes, I'll go through the big changes real quickly. Currently, companies are supposed to obtain a certificate of convenience and necessity, which is approved by city council. Our proposal would be that companies must obtain an operating permit from the city manager who is designated. Each driver currently should have an individual license issued by the city, and the city did the background checks. Proposal would be that each driver should have an identification issued by their company, and their company is responsible for the background checks, and the city would do spot checks on those records on an annual basis. Fares are regulated in our current ordinance. Proposal would be fares are not regulated, but passengers would be notified in advance of the ride of the rate to be charged. Currently, each company is required to pay 2% of their gross receipts to the city. Proposal would be that companies would simply get a one-time annual permit fee of $250. Currently, taxi meters are required and regulated. Obviously, proposed taxi meters would not be required, and again, the passengers would know in advance what their fare would be. Vehicles are supposed to be marked with our current ordinance. They do not have to be marked in the new version. And I believe that is all I have for you. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I'm sure you may have a few.
Any question for Mr. Bonds?
Yes. I received a call earlier today from a gentleman who is concerned about the background checks proposal being conducted by the company rather than the police department. The new requirement for background checks, is it going to be just as thorough as what we currently require, or any less, anymore? I believe there would be, that would be similar. The ordinance can just read you a little bit. It says that the operating authority or the company shall have a nationally accredited third-party background check provider to conduct local, state, and national criminal background checks for each individual applying to be a driver for that operating authority. I think it's, you may have heard that different types of background checks, such as fingerprint-based background checks versus this kind. And currently, we do not even do fingerprint-based background checks on the current taxi drivers. So the difference is basically the company's going to do it Yes, sir. from now on rather than LPD. Correct. He also expressed concern about insurance requirements with respect to liability from the vehicle, the driver, the whole nine yards. Could you kind of elaborate on that? Sure. Our ordinance requires that the operating authority ensures that each driver have applicable insurance requirements of the state law. And currently, the state law states, which just came into effect this January, that each driver have a $50,000 insurance policy for bodily injury or death for each person in an incident, a $100,000 policy for bodily injury or death for a person, again, per incident, and $25,000 for damage or destruction of a property. However, they have that amount of insurance when they're not, when they don't have a passenger in their vehicle. When they have a passenger in their vehicle, the coverage jumps up to a total aggregate limit of liability of $1 million. So that's, I think, the same type of coverage. I just want council to know, we didn't reinvent the wheel here. I think this is kind of a model ordinance that we follow that other cities have adopted. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonds. Mr. Wright?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
You say that we're going to check the, when the people have been tested or checked through Uber, whoever they get checked through. How often are we going to check, or how many people are we going to check, or how are we going to decide how many people to check?
It's a random pool that we'll have to determine with the operating authority, but it's an annual basis, and I think it's probably any amount that we choose to.
And who's going to do the checks?
Police Department.
Okay.
He's agreeing.
Any other questions or concerns for Mr. Bonds? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? Someone say second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now consider resolution opposing a fee with each application for the operating authority permit required to provide transportation for hire services. Mr. Bonds?
This would be a resolution that would just allow us to charge that $250 annual permit.
Any questions, Mr. Bonds? Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now consider resolution support of and urging immediate action for development and implementation and construction improvements by the Texas Department of Transportation on the U.S. Highway 271 between Tyler and Paris, Texas, the points north. Mr. Willard?
Thank you, mayor and council. The NET RMA Organization, which is the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, we have three citizens from Longview on that board. Linda Thomas is the chairwoman, and Dave Spurrier and Keith Honey also serve our interest on that board. It's a regional authority. And they are asking surrounding cities all throughout East Texas and counties as well to support a project of really reconstructing Highway 271 from Tyler all the way to Paris, Texas. And this is a very important project, about a, looks like a $70 million-plus project to do this reconstruction. And of course, 271 is, that reconstruction would benefit all of East Texas as well as the citizens of Longview. They've asked for us, or you all, to offer a resolution of support, to urge Tech dot to be expedient with that project and the funds where they can get started. I believe Greg County is also previously or in the process of doing the same kind of resolution. So be happy to answer any questions, but we'd urge that council offer this resolution of support.
What this really does, this improves our connectivity, and we've discussed this at our NPO board meeting on Wednesday, where what this is going to allow to happen is a connection really between the loop, the toll road from Tyler to Interstate 20, 271, a loop around Glade Water, all the way to where 5969, the 5969 corridor is going to come west from Marshall. And this will be a segment of road with, that will not be a toll. The rest of the segments of those roads will be tolls. But this improves our connectivity. Basically, it connects four-plus lanes from I-5969 corridor through 271, all the way through I-20 and around Tyler, back to the loop around Tyler to I-20 again, which is, connectivity is how your, how your city grows. Without these type of improvements, we can't continue to commerce up and down these thoroughfares. So this is going to be a very important piece of the puzzle that helps Longview continue to grow, especially in a westward direction as we continue through this, this transportation deal. So I urge council as well to look at this as a very positive impact upon our community. So is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're now to items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
I have a couple of things, mayor. Pine Tree ISD is currently undergoing a strategic planning process similar to the city's comprehensive plan from last year. And I was invited to participate in the deliberations with 30 board members, school administrators, teachers, parents, community leaders, to come up with a new mission statement for the district, some strategic goals and strategies to implement those goals. Pine Tree is, is going to try to think outside the box, if you will, in educating our youth and leaders for tomorrow. And I think it's particularly important that we, as city leaders, participate in any cooperative effort between all our school districts in the city. It just makes sense to, if we can have some economies of scale and coordinate things, I think it would benefit us all. Second, I'd like to brag on our city staff, in this case, city manager's office and development services. I have a constituent who bought a lot in my district, paid cash for it, went down, got a building permit, started constructing the house, and eventually, he needed to get a loan to finish the house, so he went to his bank to do so. And lo and behold, the title search showed that there were some city liens on the property dating back to 2005 when an old structure was demolished. Obviously, he was, he was somewhat frantic at this point, contacted the city manager's office, development services. Mr. Shirley and his staff determined that this particular lot was in our South Longview incentive program area, and as such, these liens could be waived. They were. And on top of that, he's going to get his building permit fee refunded. You know, this is, this is what staff is paid to do every day, but this, this is a holiday feel-good story, and I want to thank you all for being proactive and helping this gentleman and his family out, and appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snoddy?
I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. We need to excuse Ms. Williams for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to excuse Ms. Cassia?
Motion to excuse her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Wright?
We have a very generous family in our district, District 5, and I don't know if y'all have been out yet to, out on 259 to see Carmella's Santa Land, Mini Santa Land. But if you haven't, I encourage you to go out there. It's fantastic. They have done a great job, and just want to thank Carmella and her family for doing that for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Pertle?
I want to wish the city staff and everybody on the council happy holidays, and the city of Longview. I've dug into a few things the last few weeks, as Michael Shirley can kindly tell you over there, and I've learned a lot, and I've learned a lot that, that the city is really, they really work and function real well together, and I'm kind of proud of what I'm seeing. It's an aggravation to me sometimes, but I'm learning to temper that a little bit. Anyway, I want to wish all, all that and the city itself a happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Pertle. Mr. Willard?
Thank you, mayor and council. Recently, over the Thanksgiving holidays, the city of Longview employees have, every year, a Thanksgiving food drive, and we, you know, people bring canned goods and different food items for those holidays. This year, we tried to spice things up a little bit, and the department, we put a challenge out to the department that whoever raised the most canned goods got to do something to the city manager. So we have a little short video here that you might want to. Development Services, Michael Shirley won the, yeah.
Okay, just one, two, three?
Whatever you want. So anyway, I want to congratulate Development Services. They enjoyed that way too much, y'all, they really did. So we had a good time.
I am so disappointed I knew nothing about that. I would have so participated. Council needs to be involved in that next year.
You'd probably throw somebody in that, wouldn't you?
I was afraid you were going to shave your head. I didn't know what you were going to say.
Well, that would be anti-climatic.
Thanks for being such a good sport, Mr. Willard, and encouraging the giving spirit in our community. Thank you. There are 16 shopping days until Christmas. Please, please, please shop local. We say it all the time, but it makes a huge difference in our sales tax revenues and the amount of services we provide for our city. So please do your shopping local, and we appreciate that very much. Ms. Williams, Town Halloween for District 3 will be Thursday, December 15th at 6:00 PM at Broughton Rec Center, 801 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Longview Paws is, go back to that picture. Who is that? Oh, that's Cassia, okay. Longview Paws is having a Home for the Holidays fundraiser beneath the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. Buy a raffle ticket for a chance to win one of nine custom dog houses constructed by local builders, including one by District Councilman, District 6 Councilman Steve Pertle. Tickets are $5 each, or $5 for $20, and can be purchased at longviewpaws.org or at the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center during normal business hours. Drawn will be December 22nd at 5:00 PM. If you haven't seen some of these houses, they are really neat. They're very ingenious. They're creative, they're fun, so give that, give that a shot, and thanks for participating, Steve. That's very nice of you to do that.
You paid for it.
Okay, good, yeah, I'm sure. The holidays are fast approaching. City of Longview offices will be closed on Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, December 26th. Due to the holidays, there will not be residential trash and recycling collection on Monday, December 26th. Everyone's trash and recycling will be collected one day later that week. The normal Monday route will be collected on Tuesday, Tuesday route on Wednesday, and so on. Thank you for understanding, as our employees at the San Antonio Department deserve a much deserved day off. They do work very, very hard, and they very seldom get days off. So I think that's a great, great thing for them to have, and I appreciate that, their service. Upcoming events, Art Walk of Longview, the Christmas Hot Air Balloon Globe, Arts View Children's Theater Jingle Bell Jog, that's this weekend, Longview Symphony, Christmas at the Movies, and Christmas at the Courthouse. I don't know how many of y'all saw the parade, but the parade was a really spectacular event this year. The weather was great, so many participants, so many wonderful faces out there. The kids enjoy it. I really enjoyed being out there this year. The amount of effort put into that shows a lot of community pride, a lot of community spirit, and I really think that's a, that's a great event, and I thank you on all these events. And once again, this calendar is available to anybody. If you'll just post your, your event, we'll put it on our calendar so people in Longview know what's going on, and we can all participate. Survey time. In keeping with our giving spirit, there's currently a veterans group raising funds in the neighborhood of $60,000 to complete, to complete the Veterans Memorial Wall at Teague Park, which is one of our city parks. If there was a way, and eat, and I stress this, an easy way to click a button and donate $5, $10, or $20, would you be willing to help? Before I give you the results, which we all know the results are going to be positive because we live in a wonderful community, I think what the hardest thing about these type of things is finding a way to do it. And I know, I know Sean left the room because he doesn't want to hear what I have to say, but I'm going to work with Sean, and we're going to find a way to make the, oh, Sean's back there hiding. Okay. We're going to find a way to make it easy for citizens of Longview to click and give a dollar, give $5, give whatever amount you want to give, because we're going to help these veterans complete this wall and the monuments at Teague Park. And if you haven't been out there to see that, you are missing out. It is a, it is spectacular. It will, it will, it will bring your heart into your throat. So we're going to find a way to do this, and I know the citizens of Longview, you have done it over and over again, and this is no different. So we're going to ask you again to help us out, and I know the veterans will appreciate this because this is a city park, and this is a park that we want to see completed and have the citizens be able to go out and to really enjoy this area. The survey results, of course, over 80% said yes, which we knew that would be the case because we have a generous, kind, go-giving community, and we'll continue that. So Sean, me and you will get together on this one, and I know that we will make this happen. I know the citizens of Longview will make this happen for these veterans, for our community. So I appreciate the, I appreciate, I'm going to say thank you in advance. I know we're going to get this done. So thank you very much.
Mayor, as a veteran, I want to thank you for this initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. It's more than deserved. It's, it's not deserved, it's owed. We owe this to our veterans because they've given more than we will ever, ever, ever have to give in our lifetimes. So to give $5, give $10, whatever you can give, this will, this will go quickly, and I have every, every confidence. confidence that we'll accomplish this in no time at all. Our second question, for fun, Santa Claus is coming to town. Do you still believe? Well, if you don't, you're missing out. That's all I'm going to say. If you don't believe in Santa Claus, in something of that nature, you're just plain old missing out. So of course, our survey is overwhelmingly, of course, we believe, because once again, this is a great time of year. This is our last meeting for the year, so I want to thank the council. I want to thank the citizens of Longview for your support, for your kindness, once again, for your giving spirit, for making Longview a better place to live this year than it was last year, and we'll continue to do that again the following year. And a thank you to all the city staff, everyone involved. I hope everyone has a wonderful, safe, happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. We're adjourned.